I'd like to welcome you to the Brookings County Commission Meeting, Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024. We start the meeting and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
The motion is second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number four is recognition of employee anniversaries. Commissioner Krogman handle that. It is his birthday today.
Hey, happy birthday.
All right. This is a certificate of appreciation is presented to Sean Plowman on this third day of December 2024 by the Brookings County Commission and recognition for 10 years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County Commission Department. Certificate of appreciation is presented to Matthew Fee on this third day of December 2024 of the Brookings County Commission and recognition of five years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County Sheriff's Office. And this certificate of appreciation is presented to Jessica Hansen on her third day, on this third day of December 2024 by the Brookings County Commission and recognition for five years of dedicated exceptional service to the Brookings County Extension Office. And I think Tara, Tara's not here.
No, Tara's not here.
But we can say that too. Tara Rodriguez from the Brookings County Sheriff's Office in recognition for five years of dedicated service by the Brookings County Commission.
Item number five on the agenda is invitation for a citizen's scheduled time on a commission agenda for an item not listed. There is a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. The first person we have is Rosemary Wagner. Will you please come forward?
Good morning and thank you for letting me speak. Guess what? Carbon Solutions is back in town with a new route. The people of South Dakota voted that they did not want this, and yet they still push their way into our state for greed. Please listen to the voters, your neighbors, and move forward to stop them. We have to all get on board and tell Summit no again and again and again. Don't look at the money that they promised to propose because it's not worth it. The pipeline will leak. There will be toxic carbon dioxide fumes and plumes, and people will die. What will be our land in the next 20 years? What will this pipeline do to our earth? Our kids and our grandkids will have to live with this because Summit will be long gone, and we have to think of their future. Talk with other counties and band together to stop it. Look at Summit's maps and see how close they are to the people that you care about and the folks that you love. I do believe in prayer. I believe in prayer for everybody. I pray for you. I pray for you. I pray for you. I pray for you. And I pray for you. That in your heart, God will move you to do what's right for the Brookings people. Do it now, and let's stop Summit. Thank you.
Next is Melissa Elijah.
Good morning.
Morning.
The last time this commission met was on November 19th, and that was also the day that Summit Carbon Solutions submitted their second application to the South Dakota PUC Commission asking for a permit for their proposed CO2 pipeline to cross South Dakota. On November 19th, five or six Brookings County citizens like myself were here and we continue to voice our concerns before this board about the proposed pipeline. I was happy to see that Bob Hill has submitted the Brookings County for party status on the Summit Carbon Solutions PUC docket. I thank you on that. If you haven't had the opportunity to look at Summit's application and more specifically the appendix 5C on the docket, please do so. You will find land maps that the proposed CO2 pipelines plan to cross throughout the state of South Dakota. Funny thing is, or maybe it's not so funny, I've contacted people in the Brookings County where the proposed pipeline is shown to be crossing their land, and Summit Solutions has not contacted them. They had no idea. Doesn't it make you wonder how in the world this pipeline company can submit their application and feel that it's complete enough to submit to the Public Utility Commission for a permit? The pipeline is going to decrease land values, potentially impact development opportunities in Brookings County. And one area that specifically interests me or I take notice of is Lake Campbell. They've got development proposed there, and that pipeline is within a mile and a half of that area. Would you want to build a brand-new house there? Would you want to have that potential threat, a pipeline that can't even be shown under plume studies because it's a cause of national concern and safety? And that's the reason that they say that the plume studies aren't released because it's a terrorist threat opportunity if people know where those pipelines are located. So they kind of, they try to be flying under the radar, and they don't want to share with us the impact of the plume studies and what that pipeline could do, God forbid, if a terrorist would hit it. I'm here today to ask this commission to please put further discussion of the proposed CO2 pipeline route as actual agenda item, inviting the public to talk and allow you to answer questions so we know where you stand on this topic. Many different commissions are doing it throughout the state of South Dakota and North Dakota, and it's a transparent way for you to hear concerns of citizens and for you to let us know what your thoughts are. Lastly, I want to remind you, if Bob Hill hasn't already shared with you, that during the week of January 15th, the Public Utility Commission will be holding public input meetings at multiple locations throughout South Dakota. I believe it'd be beneficial for each one of you to attend the meetings and hear what the public is saying and to hear what Summit Carbon Solutions is proposing. I suspect the public input will align with the RL21 vote on November 5th. The majority of people in South Dakota do not want a dangerous CO2 pipeline running through their state. In closing, I'll just give you each one of these, which is an agenda, in case you haven't seen it, and if you're able to put it on your calendar to attend one of these meetings. I hear they're eye-opening. I did not attend the prior ones they had back in '22, but I heard they're very interesting, and you can ask questions directly to Summit and hear what people throughout South Dakota are saying. Thank you.
Next on agenda is Mallory Minor.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. Also, happy birthday. My name is Mallory Minor. I wanted to put a face to my email that I sent to the Commission on November 26th. My young family moved back to our rural Brookings County acreage this summer. We recently found out that Summit's newest carbon pipeline route is placed right next to our acreage, a literal stone's throw away. To say this was a gut punch is an understatement. From everything I've read, this type of pipeline is dangerous, and we would now live in what they call the kill zone. Our property value will surely plummet. I am asking the Commission to put setbacks in place to protect Brookings County families like mine. Spink County has an ordinance in place that our Commission should review and consider adopting. I will send this ordinance to your email to review later this morning. Thank you.
Jane Payer.
Good morning. It's Paefer.
Paefer, sorry.
And ladies and gentlemen, it'd be really nice if we could stop meeting like this, but I don't know that that's going to happen anytime in the near future. I just wanted to circle back around and check on the progress of the action item that I requested on November 19th. I'm not seeing it on the agenda, so I'm wondering if anyone can report to me on when it's scheduled to be discussed. And that action item was to establish a Brookings County Citizens Pipeline Advisory Board, if you need me to refresh your memory. Anyone? Okay, that's kind of what I thought. In light of the new proposed route, have you started to consider the Brookings County setback requirements? These requirements, may I remind you, must be established prior to the PUC granting a permit. Would anyone need a copy of the map of Brookings County new pipeline route? I would imagine you won't be surprised to learn that together with many others, I'll be submitting our applications for party status on docket, HP 24-001. Of primary concern, my concerns are the unproven capability of the company, Summit or others, in either manufacturing, fabricating, assembling, and/or building any pipeline, much less this high-pressure pipeline. I also have concern of the lack of planning, resources, process, and coordination of the various county emergency and first responder organizations to effectively address a leak of this pipeline. And I have a concern the consumption of groundwater is required by the process for the pipeline will diminish our groundwater supplies. And I have a concern, as Mallory stated, of the diminished property value, which actually should transfer over to diminished tax revenue for the county. That's all I have for you today. Thank you for listening.
Rick Wible.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Rick Wible from Elkton. First, I'd like to recognize a friend of mine, and Joseph Smart, good patriot, good resident of Aurora, South Dakota, passed away of natural causes. He was a pastor to many, so he'll be greatly missed as a resource and a leader in our community. To Elkton Sheriff's Office, thank you so much for your due diligence and work. Our city council last night approved a 3% increase with the new contract, so thank you very much. Also, when it comes to elections, of course, you know I would come and talk about that. When we look at the statistics, there are 35 ovals on the ballot. We tested four ovals, 11%. And then out of the 15,255 ballots, 49.5% were excluded from the review by statute, and that was the 7,550 absentee ballots, which are the ones highest at risk of issues. We reviewed 437 ballots, which is 2.8% of the ballots cast. And so when you combine the numbers, that's just 0.3% of the total ovals. And if you equate that to an IRS audit, it is equivalent to one day of receipts out of 365. So I want to put that as a perspective. So I have written some legislation. I've introduced 12 bills that I've written and submitted to legislators. I have 16 more on the docket that I'll be presenting to the legislature to try and improve our elections. Now, when it comes to the CO2 pipelines, over at savebrookings.com, I have published the SARTA Pipeline Report from the Department of Transportation on their investigation. And so the 286-page report is there for you to review. What is stunning there is that that report talks about how that pipeline was a 24-inch pipeline buried 30 feet in the ground. Its pressure was only 1,400 PSI at the time, and that affected a town that was one mile away. And so over 50 people were impacted by it. A small town of 350 people had to be evacuated. And so looking at my small town of Elkton, I'm concerned. And so as a representative of Elkton, I don't have council approval. I don't represent them, but as myself, I would say I would like to see a committee of two representatives from each city, one representative from each of the fire departments, one representative from each of the ambulance services, and two representatives from each of the school districts to talk about what is a proper setback for the county of Brookings, in addition to having a separate committee of citizens as well. And I think we need to come to terms with this. Otherwise, you might see cities trying to enact setbacks on their own, which I would be recommending for my city in January, or actually, I'll say February, if we don't see something with the new commissioner team to be ready to start taking action and having open discussions with the residents. Because when I look at what Summit is requesting, shallower, 22-inch pipelines, higher pressure, that doesn't seem as safe, especially when this other one was 30 feet down. And we have such high water tables that when this CO2 goes in, it lowers the temperature of the ground around it. And so if we have all this water, that's going to create thaw and freezing as it's going, shifting the ground. I don't think we truly understand this. And so, and right now, when we had people telling us, oh, we are prepared for a disaster recovery plan on CO2, that's false. We don't have a single electric police vehicle in the county. We don't have an electric ambulance vehicle. We don't have an electric fire truck. That doesn't exist. So we're not going to be able to respond. So we need to get the facts out there and do this right. Thank you.
For the listening public, we will be having an informational discussion on January 7th, once our new Commissioners are on board, and Robert Hill would be here at that time. Moving on to item number six, consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, travel education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, and human services report?
Move approval.
Second. The motion is second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. Call roll, please.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number seven on the agenda is approval of the claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any comments? Hearing none. Call roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is department head reports. Does anyone like to start with the 4H?
Good morning. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
We sang happy birthday at a recognition event for one of our guests, but I'll refrain. I don't have a large enough crowd to join in on that with me. I did submit a written report, but a few things that I'd like to highlight that aren't included on that. Our shooting sport registration was hot and heavy. It started the week before Thanksgiving. We use our fair entry program for that, which ensures that our 4H youth are just that. They are 4H members. They are enrolled. If they are not enrolled and active members, by the time they look to access registration, they are restricted because of the credentials required. So that really helps get them registered earlier in the year, helps with things later on, especially as they're looking to participate in the state shoot or in summer events like achievement days and state fair. So currently, our 4H enrollment is at 265 members, and we ended our year September 30 with 375. So we have a really good returning group of 4H members at this point in time, and a lot of new faces that are coming through, especially for our shooting sport program. We did open that the Thursday before Thanksgiving, and I joke with our 4H shooting sport instructors. It's like Black Friday. People are anticipating. They know what time the email's coming. They know what time the program will be open, and it's fast and furious. And within about 30 minutes, it takes two people to answer the incoming calls as individuals have questions, but by about noon, I think we were looking at some waiting lines. Our shooting sport instructor group is meeting this week and hopefully can address those individuals that are hoping to get in for at least their only discipline, or if they're looking to add some additional. I think our group did a nice job this year by accommodating one of the areas that builds the biggest interest, which is BB gun. And so we have additional lines of BB gun on Sunday, most of the afternoon, actually, consecutive, I think there's three or four lines. So we've been able to accommodate a greater number of youth in that regard. Archery remains popular, and everything is pretty well full, as is 22 and our air rifle, air pistol disciplines. Moving into January, I'll be conducting junior achievement lessons again, as well as an adopt a cow curriculum, especially with the 4th graders in Sioux Valley, and then looking to implement that with the work I do in the Hutterite colonies as well. Adopt a cow, there's like a beef, a beef component and a dairy component. The beef component was recently renewed and re-released in late fall, and it goes in conjunction or is a kind of a correlation, complement to the Beef in the Schools program. I'm not well-versed in Beef in the Schools, but it's about utilizing local producers to provide that meat for school lunch programs. Sioux Valley's part of that program, so they actually have their own adopt a cow kit sitting in my office yet, but I look forward to implementing that new program and doing, doing something a little bit different, just because it's available for us to use and brand-new. So our 4H clubs are setting up some trees this week in the concourse of the Outdoor Adventure Center. I have, I think, one more to get put up, and so that kind of decorates the south end of the building, and it looks very festive. And I appreciate what it is that those clubs bring in their personality and club interest to have that present. In closing, I'd like to say thank you. It's the end of the year. We've just put a close to the Thanksgiving holiday, but they say Thanksgiving and being grateful is not, it's not a holiday. It's just something we should do. And so I'd like to say thank you for your support of me and of Brookings County 4H, and especially to Mike and Ryan as you're departing from the Commission. You've been excellent individuals to work with, and I just wanted to let you know that as we move into this next season of Christmas, that the role you serve for the people of Brookings is appreciated, probably not recognized with appreciation often, but I do appreciate what it is that you have done. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Thank you for the ornament.
Yeah, you're welcome. Merry Christmas.
Christmas to you, too.
Richard. Good morning.
We've got Bob's staff report he submitted to you. I won't go over that again, but this past Monday, he did go up to Buffalo Ridge, too, for their training exercise in the evening there, their annual training that they have. And he is at the NACO convention in Samona, California this week. And tonight, we have our zoning, last zoning meeting of the year. So that's all that I have. Any questions?
Any questions, Richard? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Nothing.
Finance officer report, be it noted items, is results from the post-election audit. Look through there.
I could speak to that for a little bit if you'd like.
Okay.
Jenna Baker down in the finance office. I'm the finance specialist. The post-election audit was performed on November 14th. We had three separate auditing boards with a superintendent that kind of looked over all boards. You can see in the middle of the report there, it'll list out the names of who were on those boards. So just want to thank those guys again. Everything came out spot-on. And for the listening public, we do this audit. It's required by state statute. So we drew Bruce Community Center, and those boards did go through all 437 ballots, and they were, they compared the hand count to what the tabulator said, and everything matched 100%. So there were not any discrepancies found. And then we will pass on the certificate of the post-election audit to the Secretary of State's office. Any questions?
Any comments? I'd just like to thank Jenna and the staff, the election staff, for a job well-done again on the election, so, thank you. Item nine, or moving on, regular business. Action approve agreement number 24-95, a state of South Dakota contract for provision of community health services between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Health, Family and Community Health, Public Health Nurses Services. Motion approve.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion second. Any comments?
This is just the annual agreement with, for community health services, which we still have. If you recall, some changes were made last year where we don't contract with, for WIC services any longer, but we still do with community health.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is action approve agreement number 24-96, an application for occupancy right-of-way of county highways made by Valley Fiber Comm in Preston Township. Do I have a motion approve?
Second.
I have a motion second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Item C, action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to the Brookings County for the CDBG grant for the Brookings Behavioral Health Project in the amount of $163,955.14. Receipt number 00709287 to General Ledger Line 101-4-111-493. Do I have a motion approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion second. Comments?
This is another reimbursement from the state for that CDBG grant for the Brookings Behavioral Health Construction Project. So, you know, we're the, basically the conduit again for that grant, so we get the money in, and we turn around and pay that money out, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Item D, action approve a request to fill vacancy for Corrections Corporal in the Detention Center. Do I have a motion approve?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion second. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Item E, action approve a request to fill vacancy for a full-time male correctional officer in the detention center. Do I have a motion approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion second. Any, for the comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Item F, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for deputy sheriff in the sheriff's department. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carried. Item 10, Commission Department Director Report.
We received the 2024 recap from the chamber, kind of a two-sided postcard there that I made into a one-page showing, so there's that information. We did receive a letter from Top Coat. We've done business with them in the past with the highway department, that the owner is retiring and closing the business, just more of an FYI. We also received several close-out letters from the SDDOT for 2022 Bridge Improvement Program. I believe they were preliminary design projects, so those are also included in my report. Other than that, upcoming dates that we have, let me get back to my report here. Tonight is the Ag Appreciation Banquet for those who said that they were planning to attend. Tomorrow night is the Mayor's Holiday Celebration at the Dakota Bank Center, the 10th, next Tuesday, Communities That Care Leader Orientation. We have the December 18th Retirement Celebration for Commissioners Bartley and Krogman, that will be here in this room from 3:00 to 5:00. Christmas is coming up. We will close at noon on the 24th, and then be closed on Christmas Day, the 25th, closed on New Year's Day, the 1st, and then the 7th is our first meeting of the year. We will start early with photos. We'll be doing the Oaths of Office for Commissioners and newly, and re-elected officials, and then starting the meeting hopefully about that same 8:30 time, but starting a little bit earlier that morning. That's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Thank you. Noel State's Attorneys report today. We'll move on to Commissioner reports and discussion. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On Tuesday, November 19, I attended the 4H recognition event at the BCOAC. Good crowd, great meal. The second item was on Friday, November 22. I met with a, an employee about an issue, and that's my report. Thank you.
Mr. Bartley.
Thank you. On November 20th, I attended a BEDC meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, and it went well. There were some things obviously happening around those particular committees, I guess. On the 21st, I attended the Brookings Business Mixer Event out at the Research Park. It was well-attended by a lot of people. Great orders. If you didn't show up, you missed it all, but a couple of businesses recognized for their contribution to the community, so that's my report.
Commissioner Krogman.
I have no report today.
Mr. Hostler.
Yeah, so on the 20th, I attended the BEDC regularly scheduled meeting, and then yesterday, we had a BEDC Zoom meeting that I attended, and that is my report.
Okay. On the 21st, I also attended the Research Park Social and Awards Event out there. I left a little early. I had to get over to Samara Avenue for the public meeting on the road project, moving along. I think shortly, they'll be putting everything together and getting ready for take bids. On the 25th, I did have an extension board meeting. There's still a couple positions open on there if anybody interested. And with that, with the pipelines submitted to the PUC, there was a lengthy document and, and a couple pages in there did cover Brookings County. I have our GS, GIS staff overlaying that onto a plat map so we can see the proposed route that they intend to take. I think we'll probably have that indexed a or two, so we can look at that. With that, move on to item number 13, executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2 (1) Personnel. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. We'll head into executive session.